Yeah, and you normally, well, planting counting does occur because to make sure they don't exceed seventy-two plants. They're going to go to eighty or a hundred or whatever. So.
I wonder, is there a way for us to call like contact the state, the registry department, whatever. And say, this person's a registered caregiver, how many do they have?
Right, and I think probably what in order, once again, we don't necessarily want to know the person, the patient's name. I guess we just have to say the number. We can just call the, as part of the application process, they, the applicant can merely state, I have relationships with five patients. And then we just verify that with CRA and maybe that's every year, we just verify that they still have five associated with themselves. Or has it dropped down to four or three or something to that effect? Because it's rare, it's not, once again, who it is, it's a matter of the number. So.
Well, I was thinking about this in light of the attorney's count. The only thing I could come up with was like a written certification from the applicant. But that's, we kind of talked about it before, we got the trust issue with that.
Yeah.
Can, so I almost think, I mean, if we could get the certification or at least a statement from the state, that's something that the township could proactively do. But I like Ross's idea about the plans. I mean, we could require them to submit, and again, there's a level of trust here, but submit, you know, photos of their plants in the application and then any renewals. That way, we, without going on site, there's at least something that shows how many plants they have.
Well, I mean, the issue will be that in theory, that they won't be growing plants yet because they've approached us into to grow the plants for the patients.
Yeah.
And then, and then, and I don't know enough about the process, but the, the plants are in different stages of growth.
But it doesn't matter if it's sprouted, it's a plant, right?
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if, based on Laura's email, I'm wondering if that caregiver's card has how many approved patients they have?
Right, that's a good question too. It might, it might be. Because in the end, that's what we need and I think.
Laura says the township can request a copy of that card.
Yeah. Yeah, and he will, and the caregiver will be required to provide it with their application. So that would be enough and then we'll just have to provide, they'll just have to, part of the application either is on the card or some verification, they can provide a letter from CRA stating, I have, I have associations with up to
Yeah.
X number of patients. And then in the best case scenario, we could contact CRA and say, can you give us a, if that falls below what they've stated, can you give us a heads up basically, and you let us know?
Yeah, I'm wondering on this one, if we're going to have to have a little bit of a trust on, meaning we, they, we require a statement saying, you have this many patients and are allowed to have this many plants. And then that, with that statement, can, could the township just call and verify whenever they want?
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
And it's something we don't necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily put it in the ordinance just because we don't want to disrupt, we don't want to have to go back to the ordinance to change it when we find, if we find another method. So we, the sentence can be modified to say, verification with the state regulatory agency will be determined during the application process. Or something to that effect.
Yeah, and I would add that the applicant consents to, you know, whatever state level verification process that might exist at the time. To the township submitting request. I didn't work that very well, but we.
Right, but something like that, yeah. To verification through the state for the math, for the number of patients they are associating. Yeah. But it is, yeah, we can make that edit to make sure that it is.
That makes sense.
Everyone okay with this? Any opposed?
I have another choice.
Yeah, I think we're good. I mean, so Ross or Mario, where are we at this process? Are we ready to schedule the public hearing now?
I think so, we're in a good.
I mean, if we make this one little change, we could even do that after a public hearing technically.
Yeah.
You know, this is one little sentence and we got to get this going. So.
We're scheduled for our next.
Is everyone in favor of scheduling the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, schedule the public hearing and then Mario, just let us know if you have one more sentence revision. That's fine, I can either go out in that packet if you haven't done it time.
Yep, definitely.
Okay, moving on to old business, item two, accessory structure regulations.
Okay, so just a quick recap of where we're at. We've discussed two of the items within that section so far, that being front yard accessory structure specific to FR and RE parcels. Previously or currently limited to twenty acres, we've talked about reducing that down to ten and kind of put some of the other numbers in terms of setbacks and principal structure, roam frontage, et cetera. So last time we looked at that, I think that everyone was in a pretty good place with it, so I don't have that today. The other one that I think everyone, we got kind of a consensus on was the potential to increase in R1 and LK1, the maximum permitted floor area of detached accessory structure from eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet. And also in doing so, eliminating the special process for the increase, which is something that we've seen many, many applications for over the last several years. So that's an easy thing to draft up, that's an easy thing to put together. I think that I've got a good handle on those two items that we bring back and review on a future date. Some of the other items, and these are items that come up frequently, either frequently people calling in and inquiring, and also frequent various, various requests through the zoning board of appeals. One of those I think that we should potentially consider is currently in all residential zoning districts, there is an allowance for what is called an incidental accessory structure up to a hundred square feet in floor area. That structure does not require permits, but it is required to comply with the yard location setback, lot coverage requirements for all, all of the residential properties in which it's placed on. I would suggest that we do consider bumping that up, given that it's been thirty years since that number was put into place. Since that time, the building department has increased their limit of structures that do not require a permit to two hundred square feet instead of one hundred square feet. And again, times are changing, people have more things to store. Ultimately, when you see storage structures, you're seeing less outdoor storage, which is one of the primary complaints that we get from residential properties, outdoor storage. So I would request that we discuss potentially increasing the size of the allowable incidental accessory structure from one hundred to two hundred square feet.
Is that, like, that's a shed?
Yeah, that is a shed.
All right.
And I mean, most sheds, most kits, most prefab sheds that you see are going to be over a hundred.
Yeah, twelve by twelve, it's a shed.
Yeah, whether it be a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty, but most of them are going to fall under the two hundred square foot. And that is still below the threshold for what the building department requires a building permit for. So I think that based on how many inquiries we get, how many people just go ahead and do it anyways, you know, that may be something worth discussing. So that's one item.
Is everyone agreement on that one? Discussing it, moving forward for discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're going to make note of that. I can just draft up language for that one. It's a very, very easy one.
You said one hundred to two hundred, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I'm not going to get into it tonight, but just to set everyone's radar, one of the big things that we do want to dive into is the potential for ADUs, accessory dwelling units. That's about all that I have to say about it today, just making sure that we keep it on everyone's radar because that is going to be one of the items that is going to require a lot more research.
Well, I think that one, we're going to have to rely on McKenna for some heavy assistance on that one.
Definitely. Between McKenna and I know that there are various other municipalities in Livingston County that have, they've been updating these, so I can also work with, you know, county planning and see if they have any mild ordinances that they may suggest.
Yeah.
Actually, one was suggested to me already, but I hadn't brought it up yet.
All right, why don't you gather that information first? I'm not trying to cut Mario off, but it could save us a little money.
Yeah, I mean, point him in more of a direction. Yeah, we're not starting from scratch. So just so we have that on everyone's radar, ADUs. Another consideration that I wanted to propose is, so we're looking at eliminating the process for increase from eight hundred to twelve hundred, which was always a common issue that we had in the past, which is the reason why that we had that procedure anyways. Now, one of the biggest consistent themes that we keep seeing at the zoning board of appeals is yard location, specifically front yard accessory structures, regardless of zoning district, whether, I mean, it happens a lot in LK1, it happens a lot in FR, more than you would expect. So one kind of thought that I was thinking of, we could discuss is potentially coming up with a similar process or even using the framework of that process that we had for the increase from eight hundred to twelve hundred and shifting that to a yard location type situation where it's not an official variance, but it's reviewed by the planning commission, kind of to take some of the load off of the zoning board of appeals because it's something we see frequently. So that's something to think about.
I'm not opposed to that idea. I mean, I don't. It'd be approval by the planning commission, like the eight hundred, twelve hundred?
Yeah, very similar process.
I think, I definitely don't think that it needs to go like all the way up to the board, but that's just my thought. ZBA would, it would. Yeah, but right now, they can have a location variance to put it. So it goes to ZBA.
But the issue I think is that, given the, given the distance in the houses and some of these front yards, sometimes it does kind of make sense. That's also probably why they're coming forward and that's also probably why they're getting the variances. So the issue could be, rather than go from the current standards of the ordinance, jump all the way up to getting a variance, put an intermittent step in the middle that might let it, just like you already have, from going from eight hundred to twelve hundred. So whether we call it a permitted encroachment in the front yard that is approved by the planning commission, whether you choose to do special land use, you could go special land use for it and then it becomes a public hearing and the neighbors are notified. Or maybe it's, it's some, you know, that would be a little higher.
We already treat it that way, however the increase, and it is already a public hearing. It's a positive variance request is what it really is.
So, yeah, yeah, so that's good. So then it's really, it's really something that you're halfway there kind of. So it's just, so it's almost, almost just formalizing that, expanding that, that step of the eight hundred to twelve hundred to include the possibility of the yard location. And then what you could do is even, you could put some criteria in the ordinance if you wanted that are of a concern, like maybe the size of it, maybe its location in relation to, relationship to that house or to adjacent structures, you know, like a couple. So there's definitely ways, if you'd like, we could, we could present them and then you could react to them. There's one option to do it. So that way you can just react to that process and see if we've gone too far and then, and then it's a matter of whether you think, all right, it's gone two way, too far one way and not enough the other, or something like that.
Well, with the, with the ZBA currently reviewing an item like that, you know, I feel like a lot of times it's like, all right, we want a one foot variance for the side yard setback and the location. So now it would be, come with the planning commission.
Sometimes, but sometimes they're exclusively yard location.
But I'm saying now if they wanted that, they would have to be.
They would need to do both.
Okay. So I think it's worth discussing. I'm, I'm open to it. I don't.
Yeah, right now, I mean, that section is called modification of requirements. We wouldn't need to change a whole lot about that. And actually, the criteria that we use is all based on compatibility. So, I mean, really, it's more or less, if there is a way to do that, it's more tweaking than starting from scratch. And it is a proven process. It's something that was initially put into place as kind of a trial, as a test period to see how it worked. And, you know, now that we've gone twenty years with it or whatever, we realize that, hey, maybe twelve hundred's a more reasonable number anyways. So we don't need, but yard location is a consistent issue that keeps coming up. So that's just the process behind that.
And then one other aspect to whether they need, would need to then also get, go to the planning commission for certain things and then going to the ZBA for another. In theory, the, you would ramp up the criteria and be a little bit more stringent on granting the variances, like being a little bit more letter of the law with those and then maybe allowing for some of the other criteria. So that way the process is a little bit more, right? We can see based on the request before us that this is something that's, that's acceptable to the, to the community. However, we just don't want to go to that. So then therefore, leave the variance where it should be, be very minimal process, if it is a true variance, because then, because you know, because the variance is, they're requesting permission to break the laws is the way I phrase it. And so that way, in terms of the severity of it. And so that way, become, the variance becomes a true, you know, standard for that. But still then, all the variances that have been given in the past are more the idea of like, well, the reason we give it is because they're, it's acceptable to the community. So. We, like I said, we could present, we could, if as long as you're open to it, we can present something to you if you'd like. And so that way you could react to it, or you can give us a direction and we'll go in that direction, write the ordinance amendments in that direction.
I think Zach is pretty, pretty new to the ZBA.
Yeah, I went to one last night actually, and we had one that was a variance for, I think it was both location and setback. So that would have fallen into that category that you were referring to. Yeah, I couldn't, I wouldn't unfortunately comment on the number that.
But it's good to have your, you know, with, with Rich being out, you know, it's good to, you know, have you on the ZBA to, to have that context. So.
Glad to be there.
Any, any other discussion on accessory structure regulations?
I've just got a few other things to ask about. One of them, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at our specific regulations for gazebo's, limiting them to fourteen feet in height and a hundred and eighty square foot in floor area, whereas we don't necessarily treat other accessory structures in a way like that. I, I can't really figure out why, why gazebo's are treated that way. And there's really not a clear definition of gazebo, so I think that's something that I'm getting into. So that's one. And I think that's enough to get started now. There's a few other, I mean, well, there's a lot of other issues in this, this section, but I think that that's probably a good place for, for now. It gets me something to start working on and I can start working with Mario on some of it as well.
Yeah, and you know, the ADUs I think is going to be, you know, quite a.
It's going to be the big one.
It's going to be a big one. So we don't want to tack too much on.
I want to try to check off some of the small ones.
Listen, you have low hanging fruit like, yeah, low hanging fruit like gazebo's and stuff and just kind of, and then build it up.
But if you, if you're okay with me looking into that, look into that and figure out, give me some recommendations. That's all I've got for now.
All right, anyone else, any other further discussion on accessory structure regulations? Hearing none, we will move to new business, item one, Fork Creek Dreams Private Road. For this one, if the applicant or both of you want to come forward so that way you're on the microphone, if it is being recorded and probably start off with, well, should they start off with a summary of, of the proposed development? And then, or do you want to, or do you want to go over the process first?
I'd say a brief summary, then we can get it to plan a review. And I think that's.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having us tonight. My partner Harold Cole and I, Scott Bellicky, are in a partnership on some raw land development that borders Lake Shannon. Harold's father developed Lake Shannon as, as well as fifteen other lakes around the Midwest. This parcel is a remaining parcel of the encompassing area of Lake Shannon. It was designed to be larger than it was finally developed. Harold and his sister carried this parcel through their family for seventy years. His sister didn't have interest in developing, so I bought her share out. That's how Harold and I have become partners. We have worked with our Lake Shannon Association to allow them to utilize the property for some dredging activity. That was, we were the recipients of a road for them to access the property. We had engineering drawings from Boss Engineering as well as Livingston Engineering Company develop a road for us. And our agreement with our association was that they would utilize those drawings and build the road to our engineered construction. It's a very nice gravel road. It separates our two parcels, a large fifty-nine acre parcel and a three acre parcel. The three acre parcel being the easement or access to the larger parcel. The road in, the subject road was subsidized by Harold and myself to be a full width of twenty-two feet gravel, full compact with GeoMat underneath. These are all things that we subsidized because the association didn't need it to do their work. But we said, if you're going to buy, buy it, we subsidize the work, cash out of pocket on this. We've been working with two different engineering firms, as I mentioned, and we have some beautiful drawings and beautiful plans. Our interest here tonight is to develop or permit our driveway into a road. We consider, as you look at the, as you look at the picture, we consider all the front end as our saleable lots and everything on the back end, the large parcels will be retained by Harold and myself and maybe one other partner. But we're looking to convert our driveway into a private road. And we have received permission from the road commission. They've granted our sightline access, things of that nature. So we're just here looking to move forward with our project.
Actually, all the original permitting was done by Lake Shannon. We really had nothing to do with it. So they got, they got, they got that done. And I will say that they had a thousand truckloads of the bottom of Lake Shannon back there, so it's packed down pretty good. Me and Scotty figure our wipes could never do that with UPS, so. So it's packed down pretty good. But, yeah, it worked out pretty good. That it was a win-win situation. Originally, they're just going to dredge it in, but they needed a place to dump it. And my mother had done it with them before on some other property and it didn't hurt the property. So there we are. Now, we just want to finish up a sixty-five year development and I'd probably say the most successful one in, in Tyrone Township and parts of Deerfield. But, so we want to finish up good. Scotty and I have a hundred and eight years on Lake Shannon, so we're, we're excited about adding to the community and finish this up good.
Thank you. Ross, can you kind of walk us through this approval process for both the shared row, the private road, shared private drive and the land division, which is, my understanding, not applicable to the planning commission?
Correct, yep. So the procedure for a shared private driveway and private road, they're the same procedure. A public hearing is required. This is going to be the initial meeting and review. If you're in good shape after this, we can schedule a public hearing in front of the planning commission. That is going to include publication of the newspaper as well as notification of the mental property that's been free on the subject parcels. And once we hold the required public hearing, at that time, the planning commission is able to, if they feel ready to make a recommendation to township board for approval through conditions denial or defer back to the PC for further review. As far as the land division aspect goes, because a private road and a shared private driveway is included within the land division application request, we are required by our ordinance that first, before we can process the land division via the land division committee, it must first be approved by the township board following recommendation from the planning commission.
Understood.
That's why we're here, right?
Yep.
All right, and then we have had a review by both the township engineer Spicer and the, our township planner McKenna, Mario is with McKenna. And I, I don't think we have anyone from Spicer here, but. Ross, should I maybe just go through that one?
If you'd like, I mean, a lot of it is covered. I think we should probably utilize Mario while, while he's available here and then we can have.
Understood.
We do also have, I hope that I got included, a response letter, I believe, from the engineering regards to the initial engineer review.
Yeah, I think you've had a chance to react to the engineer's review and update the drawings, but not yet. Mario's got done last week and it's a very good review, Mario, so.
That's, that's one thing we reviewed before here. We have not seen, but.
It was in the packet, but, so that was just done last week.
It opened for him.
Yep, so.
Let's knock it out. Did you need a copy of it or?
All right, so Mario, why don't you go, go through your review?
Yes. So apologies, my computer's on the fritz at the moment, but I'm going through a little bit of memory. But as we've noted, the review process involves both the private road, the shared private drive standards and eventually the land division. I, as you can see in my review letter, oh, perfect, thank you. As you can see in my review letter, I went over each individual criteria there. But basically, the, 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 the short version, the short version is that, as proposed, the, the, the private road and then the extension of the, of the, of the shared private drive could work. There's some detailed information that is normally included on, on these applications, but that's also because the applications aren't usually, if I'm corrected, that it's this, dealing with this amount, much amount of land. But as proposed, it, it could, it could work. There, as, goes through the, I go through the checklist for both the approval criteria requirements and the road design standards for each. Any approval of this will, as Ross mentioned, will require the, eventually the engineers' final approval and the fire department's approval, the road commission. As I mentioned, we already have some comments from the road commission. I will note that it's been, it's been a few years since that happened. At, back at that time, the road commission did want to see some revised. They wanted verification that the site clearance line, site clearance triangles were on the approach permit and that sort of thing. So it might, might not hurt just to talk to the county one more time and get their approval. But to get into some of the specifics, when it comes to the layout of the road and the private road standards, or excuse me, the maximum length in the single access point, that's point G on page four. The way the ordinance reads is that the measurement shall be from the right of way of the public road at the intersection with the private road, so down at Dean, to the minimum front building line of the farthest parcel with access to the public road via that single access point. And this shall include parcels located on the shared private driveways. So in theory, at least the way I read that, that means it would go all the way to the build line for parcel eleven, which is all the way in the back, if the intent is to have that being built. So, and if, if, but there's some options for that, you know, if either the, you know, that, that distance can be reduced to reconfiguration or, you know, I'm not sure if in the past we've gone through in saying that some of those back parcels wouldn't be buildable from a single family standpoint. Or, or if revised parcels to, you know, twelve hundred or installation of a dry hydrant system. But also, Ross has also mentioned that there's also some other alternatives that the fire department would indicate, such as those back, back homes being on a sprinkler system. So, yeah. So, yeah. Oh, you have? Okay, great. So then that, so there are other options to address that issue. So, so if that's the case, then that would be, we would just ask for the applicant to indicate their preference and then on the revised material indicate that that's like, you know, these back parcels will be on sprinkler and, or you want to do the hydrant.
To speak to that, the back two parcels will be retained by my partner and myself. And we have met with the fire department and they're. And we have met with the fire department and their, their requirement was that they would not provide service. We would need to provide sprinkler systems within the household and we both agreed to that. And if those were saleable parcels, that would be of concern to me to make sure people, you know, that that information did cascade, but it's E and I, we understand.
And there's one other lot, but Gary Edwards had the same issue. It turned out his was a little bit, and they were okay. But yeah, we would just make it known that that's part of the requirement that you have to have a sprinkler system. But they limit, it's not a big expensive thing anymore the way that they allow you to do it.
And it's, Ross, it's similar to Shannon Glen back lot, correct?
Yes, yep.
I mean, that's, that's much, that's gotta be longer. Those are long.
But we're handling it upfront, yep.
Is it a, is it a strangler or sprinkler system that comes out of, or doesn't go on a chain, just, oh, okay.
It's typically runoff of the, well, it may need to be an oversized well depending on the size of the home, but typically a residential well, be it a bit oversized, will suffice at least in the situation at Shannon Woods Estates, or by Shannon Glen there.
They don't make you have a generator or anything. It's, it's pretty doable.
Just containment system within your well.
They consider it as a reliable power source.
I guess the important thing is that, that requirement of the 1200 feet is specific to fire protection, is my understanding of the order.
Correct, yeah, that's.
For us, I think as long as the fire authority, you know, says, here's what they need to do, then I'm okay with it as far as Planning Commission. Does everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
Right. So we would just ask that the applicant, you know, you guys indicate your preference, how you wanna deal with it, and then you just put that on the applications that'll be seen for the public hearing.
Yeah, and we wanna have the documentation from the fire department.
Yeah, right.
And if you already discussed it with them, if we had that letter at the public hearing, then it's not a condition?
Right.
Then it's not.
Right. One other aspect that's technically in the zoning ordinance is when it comes to the layout of the roads, the zoning does require developments that are adjacent to open or undeveloped land to provide stub streets or easements. We could extend the property lines for the future connections. Once again, you know, this is a large amount of land back there. It seems to me the connection to the north might be feasible in the future. I know there are some single family to the east, I believe, but, you know, I wasn't sure what the Planning Commission's normal policy for this is when, when the ordinance does ask for those kind of connections. One other possible connection could be, because the other aspect that, that the zoning ordinance talks about is either connection to existing roads, which aren't there right now, or, once again, the road layout, is some type of eventual loop or future connection to another road. And so on the, the road around the lake to the, to the, to the west, in theory, there could be a connection out, out to there. I mean, I know there's, there's a massive amount of top, you know, slope issues that would be dealing with that.
They're swapping a creek.
Right, yeah, that too. So, so I know that could be an issue, but I wasn't, I just was bringing it up because it's a point of discussion from the Planning Commission to see if you'd wanna have that connection or not.
We knew we needed two exits if we were gonna go bigger, but we're just doing a simple 10-lot split. We're gonna keep two big lots, so we don't have development in mind. We don't have, we don't have access to another one.
Yeah, we, we completely respect your position on that, but there is a nice natural land division, not natural manmade, being power line and then manmade being our association to non-Lake Shannon Association properties. So you have two boundaries already that, that I will be in possession of right up to the edge, and I don't intend to have a road run through my property. So your, your concern is definitely warranted, but I, I don't see.
Let's, the power line lets us run it down there.
So we're talking 10 and 11, right?
Correct.
And, and X, I should say, and X goes part 211.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so you get the.
Eleven is powered by a power line, that's the clear cut you see there.
Right, yeah.
There's, they're not gonna run a, a road under it or anything.
Right.
There's already needs to be. It's not feasible.
Yeah, I, I think, in my opinion, I don't think that intent of that ordinance really, really applies here with it, you know, being much room for future development. Even in that, it says undeveloped area or undeveloped lots, like, I mean, they're all really developed. I mean, they're, they're big estates, so it's kinda, I don't know, however you.
Well, and you are correct, it's, it's not necessarily applicable in this situation, but if there were, if it was, the way the ordinance is written is open or undeveloped land. And if the open or undeveloped land, I would say, were in our master plan showed to have like a higher density.
Oh, good.
But in this case, it really, actually, I guess, when I think about it, it doesn't because the higher density is around the lake and then we're trying to go to lower density as you get away from the lake. So like going further north and further, you know, further north, it doesn't, it's not, you're not, we're not planning to get more density that way, we're actually to lower it, you know, going north.
All the property touching our property has a home on it.
Right. Yeah, definitely to the east, all those houses.
There's no vacant land anywhere.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see it being much different than Shannon Glen. I, I know there's a private park at the back of Shannon Glen. I don't know if that's deed restricted as a park.
It is.
So that, that one might be different, but I think there's even property.
I don't think that was even brought up really.
But, you know, even like, I believe it's Ravenwood on, I don't know, I think.
Other side of Shannon.
That's, yeah.
Is that here?
Yep.
That one? I don't know, I, I don't.
Yeah, that was it.
Feel any for that requirement? Does anyone feel differently?
And then, yeah, so, once again, just indicating that on the future application, I mean, revised material stating the intent, I think will address that issue and the fact that there's no, no open or undeveloped land in proximity will, will address that, that situation. There are some, some other minor things, like such as the maintenance agreement submitted for the shared private drive, it had some options you guys needed to select. So we were just asked that you make your choices for that and then just submit a revised version that reflects how you intend to, you know, have that relationship between the shared property and knowing now that it's yourselves, you know, you actually figure that out. And then, really, the only other thing I brought up as a point of question because, because of the just base, I only based it on the information that's in the application. But now, but, so this might not, this probably isn't as relevant anymore, but just with regards to the development of the, the rest of the area. At the time, it seemed like, you know, if we had the, looking at the application, going from the, from the private road to the shared private drive that's accessing 24 acres, then to the, basically an easement that accessing another 19, if the intent in the future was to develop that, we might wanna consider a road configuration or at least the construction of, of the, of the private road and then the shared private drive to be of a standard where the, where the potential for that to be, the shared private drive to be converted to a private road.
So you're talking about?
If it was, if the intent was to develop the back.
With, with respect to that, I completely understand if that was my future goal. Honestly, I'm happy to have a large parcel and if you know of any further parcels for sale, please let me know.
Understood, understood.
So, what's the comment is, is basically, if they wanna split it, this driveway option doesn't work. So just think about it.
But the, the driveway that they're asking is, is the same standard as the road.
And that's the one thing that would be, that I would think, I would be looking to clarification from the engineer, because if the engineer's saying that base is being, is going to be created such that in the future, it could be converted to a private road standard with no issue, then you're kinda future-proofing it for yourself. If that was, once again, if that was the intent, but if it's not the intent.
Narrower, I'd, I'd be okay with.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely.
All right. So, yeah, that's really, and with the odds there, that's the other half ask, the other half of that issue I just pointed out.
Understood.
That, you know, if that was a question. And so if the intent was future development, you'd have to go one way, but the intent is not that direction, so I want to just clarify that. So the rest of the letter, as I said, it goes through a detailed checklist of all the individual section, requirements of the zoning ordinance, it's a majority of the rest of those others. And I, as they've been, as we've been discussing, I think if they just submitted some revised information, they'd be ready for the public hearing and address all the issue, all those other issues. And then with regards to the, the, any, I provided some initial comments about the land division review, but those are more addressed for the land division committee. And then, once again, because there's no anticipation for future growth past along the shared driveway, it doesn't seem necessary to, to consider any kind of reconfiguration of the proposed lots, because they, that would be their final, that's their proposed final configuration in that site, so.
Go ahead. Can I ask that knowledge gained tonight be used to amend the report?
Yeah, absolutely.
To abbreviate?
Yeah, 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 this is just the first draft.
Understood.
Yeah, so.
I mean, as long as it's addressed, we don't actually officially amend the draft.
Yeah, we don't, 'cause then we gotta pay him to go do that. We can just, we'll go through, like, say he's got criteria that he recommends, it's like five items, we'll go through each. We can even do it like a draft of that tonight, but before this gets recommended for approval to the board from the Planning Commission, we'll go through each and say, no, we're, we're okay not doing that.
Thank you.
We're okay doing that one later. We're gonna require it, but you can do it contingent, so.
Just trying to streamline and clarify the water, yep.
And that way, we'll provide you clear direction on what you need to change in your plans.
Appreciate it.
And I guess, even as far as that single point access, I don't really see something action in the documents. That can just be our review of it, saying we're not gonna require that.
Right.
Right?
We have the fire department's documentation back then.
And then, yeah, that's the key, is the fire.
I'll provide that to you directly if you can share.
Yep.
Yeah, having the fire department comments, that's, that's all.
You got it.
So, you know.
So there was that one comment about the sign, I, I mean, I did, I went down to the one next door, what's that one called? Indian View or something?
What, next door where?
Next to the township, there's a private drive.
Yeah.
Indian Trail. You know, similar, you always see private road, sometimes they got like 15 miles an hour or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just a note added to the plan to say that all, all signage shall be built Michigan uniform, traffic controlled.
Yeah, so, you know, you have a street sign.
Use a normal stop sign, not like.
What we have up there now is just a local joke, Dredgewood.
And then, and then you mentioned the name of the road, I think.
Foxwood.
As long as the county's okay with it, I, you know, I think I would be.
All my dad's lakes, he's, would've got a lot of them.
Yeah. Surewood has a lot of the same names, but there's about, we had about 30, 40 names
to pick from.
I have a quick question. You guys are, you know, keep parcel 10 and 11 for your future builds of some sort, correct?
Yep, future residents, not builds. Maybe residential, but, but not development.
So parcel 10 would have one singular dwelling?
That's the intent.
Parcel 11 would have one singular dwelling and then parcel nine would probably not have anything or would?
No.
No, hopefully it will, but.
So all three of these bigger lots would potentially have a singular home?
That's the idea.
And they would have to all have the sprinklers.
Yep.
One thing from my perspective, just so that you guys know, that isn't related to the actual design, is the maintenance agreement, applies both to roads and the driveways. That's something that would be very important to me, just so you guys know, 'cause it could take some time to get that put together and get, get everybody in agreement, and so.
We, I actually went to a lawyer we used before thinking, hey, oh, this is all you gotta do, 'cause you guys do it all the time. He was wanting to do all the weird other stuff. I just took the one off the internet, but me and Scott would sit down and look at and go through it and any advice you have. Yeah, 'cause we wanna have that solid, but I thought the lawyer would know how to, would know exactly what we're talking about, and he didn't.
We'll, we'll clarify that. We will get a, a formal agreement, even if we draft something up, we'll get it in front of somebody for some clarification and clarification.
Sounds good.
Are you the guru on that?
I am the resident attorney.
Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll bring it to you.
It, it truly is valuable, both to the township and to you guys. I can't tell you how many fights I've seen over situations like this.
Get rid of a lot of headaches.
It's never good, so.
Do you have a template you could recommend?
I, I wouldn't be able to do that with you guys, but there's, there's an attorney out there that should be able to help you. There's a lot of lawyers that do that, so.
Could I take Garrett's question just one further?
Yeah.
So your intention is not to build anything other than your own residence, but 20 years down the road, it's just something that the next Planning Commission deals with, it's not anything we can.
Isn't there a timeline of like 10 years or something before you can split again or something like that?
Well, it depends on if you exhaust all the splits or not. I don't recall how many splits you have available. I know we looked into that previously, but I don't recall specifically if you're exhausting every available split. However, if you were to try to split those parcels, access is going to be the primary issue, which means you're gonna end up back in front of the Planning Commission for a modification if he decides to allow for that.
But that'd be like a minimum of 10 years, right? Isn't there a minimum?
That's for redivisions, yes, but that's only if you have exhausted all of your splits, which I think that you may have.
Yeah, we have.
Right there, you may have one extra.
I think we're only allowed 10.
On that parcel, we've exhausted.
But then the issues could be that in the future, someone might wanna do a site condo or a plat. Not to say that's what it is, but, but at that point in time, then whomever wants to try and do that, they will have to deal with the situation of the current condition of the road and what they might need to do to make that road safe for the, for the fire department's approval criteria at that time, to get that kind of density of it. And that's if the, the township changed the density in that area to be, allow for those smaller lots, 'cause obviously, not obviously, but in the end, it's about how many homes they could develop on the site, the existing topography, the existing, you know, whether that's even feasible in, in those natural features. So it would be something that if someone chose to, to do that, you know, 50 years from now, they will have to deal with the situation at that time of the current conditions and then the conditions of the road as, as they were, as, as it is 50 years from now. So I would say that if you, if the intent of the community, Planning Commission was to see that eventually be developed at a higher density, and if the property owners wanted to have it at a higher density, now would be the time to, once again, future-proof it and try and have that built for that way, if that was the intent.
I want it built for someone 50 years.
Right, yeah, that's the thing.
You know, you gotta, you gotta design and build the road for, for the intended use.
Exactly.
We're not gonna build a freeway to nowhere, 'cause there might be some.
We looked at site condos, we looked at all that stuff and we chose to do, because we're, we're part of Lake Shannon, we don't wanna make enemies, you know, they're, oh, everything, you have 60 boats, you know, and stuff. This is just a simple split and we're good with it, we, they're our neighbors. And so I don't think there's, actually, the way it's worked out with us, letting them use for the road, they're actually like, it's, it's good. I went through this before with my mom with the development and we had neighbors for 30 years and all of a sudden, you know, they were mad at us and stuff, so I, I just have dreaded that. And so we've tried to, tried to consider our neighbors and everything. We're, we're happy with.
And everything that we've done has been in the spirit of the, the remainder of the lake. The lake has numerous offshoots, court streets and that, that are also gravel and cul-de-sac like, and this is very similar in style and taste. Our lots may be a little bit larger, I don't think that's a detriment to anybody. There's a little bit more room, but because we were restrained with the amount of splits, we, we offered larger lots.
Yeah, I would say that if the master plan of the township showed this as a higher density area, and if the property owners wanted to eventually have it as a higher density, then now would be the way to do it. But since neither.
The lake don't, we don't.
But since, yeah, since the township doesn't, right now, at this point in time, and they, they don't, it's, it's not the case. And it's just an issue that doesn't seem like, it's not for the long, it's not, it's not for the short term and apparently it won't be for the long-term future in this area. It's not gonna be that way.
According to the master plan and what I hear, you know, on a daily, weekly basis, people are still looking for the larger parcels. They're not looking for the small parcels. They're, they're becoming hard to come by these days.
We'll have one for you.
Send, send them our.
When, you know, in 50 or 100 years from now, if someone did wanna develop this, you know, the road's there, you just pave the road and meet the requirements for that, the intended use at that time. But right now, it's, it's about the road approval for the use that's presented.
Yeah, and that's, and that's the other thing, I think, because of how they, the road is being built and based on the township engineer's suggestion, it sounds like it potentially could be 100 years from now done that way, if for 100 years from now they wanted to. But that's 100 years.
Not for us to deal with today, yep.
No.
One thing I was thinking. One thing I was thinking of is, Ross, sometimes with Lake Shannon, we gotta, do we need to get any approval from them?
They already separate entity from us.
So we can approve it, and maybe they can't build it because there's deed restrictions for that.
They have their own restrictions that.
Yeah, so that's separate.
Of course, we cannot ask for their approval, um.
We would like sheds as big as you guys have.
All right, and I, my understanding is that's already all worked through, but we're separate, so.
We do not do a.
We've already addressed their, their setbacks and acreage size and things of that nature, so. And, and the, the housing requirements are square footage-based, and that, that will be cascaded to the purchasing folks.
So do they still have you required to have no detached structures?
That's right. So even on multiple acres, still no mark?
There's properties on Linden Road is agricultural-looking properties, ten plus acres of.
Following the same rules, yeah.
Well, they get, they get a good bonus with that, though, too.
But you can put your boat in.
Yeah.
They have them though.
Just can't put them, you gotta put them in an attached garage, your boat, or somewhere else.
Right, so going through the, um, the, the engineer's review, um, you know, they are mentioned, um, approval from fire marshal, which we've discussed, county drain commission's office, they reviewed it yet?
Yes, they have, well, they, they have.
We're waiting for this, they, yeah.
They're waiting, chicken or the egg?
Yeah, I, I understand, so that would be a contingent approval, potential, um.
But you guys have to do it first, and then we go to them.
Yeah.
I feel like that's how it usually goes. And, and then the, uh, road commission, I, I think it's, I went out there and looked at it. I didn't measure exactly, I think the ordinance says fifteen feet from the through edge of pavement, you should see far distance. I, I could see all the way down to Linden Road stop sign, but I could have been fourteen feet, so.
I, I can have it updated if necessary, it's fifty bucks or something, but, I mean, it's, it's been signed. And it's only gotten better since he signed it, because we've removed a lot of brush and trees and things since he signed it. But I think in the spirit of it, it was, you can see the stop sign at one end, you can see the stop sign at the other end.
And the way I read it, the, the commissioner mentioned, as long as on the, when you submit the per- the permit for the approach, as long as it's shown on there, then that's sufficient.
Okay. I think they wanted it on the drawing, I think it's something for your engineers to, you look in that ordinance and you go, they, even in the, uh, applic- even in the, uh, road commission document, I think they give the numbers, like how far you should see. And you just draw the triangle, fifteen feet off this road, five hundred or whatever down there, draw the triangle, and hopefully it's.
I'll have my engineer add it to the drawing.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll show approval.
Then, um, the, the, the township engineer did have some comments on the drainage, and I think that was already addressed by your engineer.
Correct.
So I think, I, I mean, it looked, made sense to me.
Okay.
Um, but the, the township engineer will provide approval, correct?
Yeah, we just send them the file, we're impressed.
And then the agreement, I, I think, that's something that hasn't really been complete, but it sounds like it's in the works. I don't have any other comments or questions, does anyone else? Any other feedback to the applicant before they proceed, um, and we? So we're, uh, we're ready to schedule the public hearing?
Yeah.
Everyone in agreement? Yeah, Ross, scheduled that?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Nothing, nothing controversial on our night.
Well, meeting's not over. All right, moving on to call to the public. Anyone call to the public? Hearing none? Oh, was it? You said, oh?
No.
Oh, nope, none. Okay, miscellaneous business. Miscellaneous business, next week workshop, Wednesday, six P M.
What do we got? I can probably have some accessory structure stuff, some of the easy stuff to talk about, um. Marijuana, we.
No, we don't, we, we can't.
Because we'll have the public hearing.
We gotta wait till the public hearing, I think. There's, we've, we've discussed a small little thing so much, we're ready to get that one done, I think.
Do you want to talk to the public, or want to just tentative?
Well, we tentative, we, yeah, make, say contingent on.
Yeah, if you're able to get a whole bunch done on accessory dwelling units, or all the other miscellaneous detached structures, I, then I could see it being a productive meeting. Right now, we don't have a lot of ongoing business, um, and I, and I'm tentative for the next meeting, so.
Okay, then we'll just tentatively set it, and we'll be in touch.
All right. And then one other thing for the miscellaneous business, um, in the past, we, there's a requirement for the planning commission to prepare an annual report, um, and i- in the past, we've done that through, uh, joint meeting with the board, which we just haven't, haven't done yet. So, um, Ross, what, um, what is your thoughts on providing that annual report?
So my, my opinion is, short of there being another public, or a, uh, joint meeting scheduled prior to the end of fiscal year, beginning of next fiscal year, I think that we should do it probably towards the end of this fiscal year.
Can, can you remind us when the fiscal year is?
April.
April one starts the new year?
Yes, uh, yes.
All right, would that be your understanding, Mario, is that it should be done at the end of that fiscal year? We should try to do it, like, calendar year is irrelevant.
As long as you do it annually, it does, the state law doesn't require it in January, so whenever you, eh, want, as long as one is done annually, then you're meeting the intent of the ordinance, or the statute.
And who knows, we may have a joint meeting prior as well.
Yeah.
If, if there is not a joint meeting, I would say that we want to get it in March.
Okay, so, um, for that, my thought is just to summarize all the action that the planning commission has done, whether it's approval or denial, um, in one-line bullet points.
Yep.
Um, not, not much other than that, any other thoughts on that?
Just forward.
Yep.
Keep it simple.
All right, any other miscellaneous business? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Um, motion and support to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We need to adjourn. One hour. Yeah, it's been in there for a while, so like.
That's awesome, because that's always used to be on the.
Oh, really? You'd have to ask Ross when that got started, he may know, but it's, it's the ordinance, and they may have a date on that last revision. Yeah, and, you know, that's, that's the planning commission, they said, land division committee, I believe that. So I, I don't know, but, you know, it's, stay the way, and, and, you know, it can be like. Well, we saw that, and it, it all, but.